...center and there's an exhibit here called "A Dog's Tail." The fire department showed how their search and rescue dogs can find people buried in earthquake rubble. We know people would rather not get rescued than leave their pet behind, and we know that pets will risk their lives for their people, so this has to be part of true disaster planning. The most important thing about caring for your pets during a disaster is to prepare before the disaster, because you may not be home when an earthquake hits or when a fire hits your area. So you want to make sure that your pet enclosures are secure so they can't escape, nothing can fall on them, scratch them, poke them if they're in that situation. You want to make sure that your pet has ID and current vaccinations, and in your disaster preparedness bag, if you're preparing to evacuate, you want to make sure you have your pet papers, any medication the pet is on, just like you are, extra water, extra pet food, something to calm the pet down, a favorite toy. So if you're with your pet, you can relocate with your pet and have those things with you. If you're not with your pet, then at least you can secure the location, put a sign on saying "I have two dogs inside," so that if someone comes out to rescue them, they know what to look for.
Residents of Nickerson Gardens are getting a helping hand in finding and securing a job, thanks to a new Jobs Plus program.
I'm doing construction. I'm on 12-story buildings, hanging off scaffolds, so it's like, phew, it's tough, but you've got to stick in there, because now it was just a job to me, but now I have a career, and it pays well. So I just encourage everybody to just take advantage of the jobs that they have around here, because it pays off at the end.
We've been awarded $3.7 million by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development called a Jobs Plus program. So we're going to be bringing access to employment specifically for residents of Nickerson Gardens. It'll be job training, job placement for careers here at Nickerson.
We've been able to come here and invest in the community with programs for the young people to make sure they can graduate and go to college. Jobs Plus program here at Nickerson Gardens will connect more than 700 residents to good-paying construction and healthcare careers between now and 2023.
Today gives us an opportunity to remind ourselves that there is good opportunities here with this type of grants that's coming from the federal government down to the local
Now, after you graduate, we want to make sure that folks here in Nickerson Gardens can benefit from a growing economy, not just jobs, but careers to people in construction and healthcare.
The initiative is funded by a $3.7 million grant, which was awarded to Hacklaw by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development earlier this year. From jobs to housing, more beds were rolled out to help those experiencing homelessness. Folks celebrated the grand opening of the sixth bridge housing site to open in L.A.
We are at a bridge home in Hyde Park in South Los Angeles. 100 beds, ready to go for people who are living on the streets and who are houseless.
There are thousands of men and women and children sleeping on the streets every single day, because they don't have a place to live. And so this site, a bridge home, is going to house 100 of those people, move them directly from street into a safe place to be. You have three meals a day provided for you. In addition to that, you have all these other services we're going to bring to you, so that this is just your first stop, but your final stop is your own place with your own keys.
This is not a thing where we can just have a party today, turn our backs and wipe our hands. We have to engage with this facility, and we have to engage with the community of neighbors that will live here with us. This isn't a problem we can't solve. Don't tell me we can't do things that will house our brothers and sisters. We can and we will, my friends. This is a bright spot in a very tough problem that we all face, but history will record that we're facing it, facing it head-on, and we're getting it done.
What happens when the LAPD, the LA Dodgers, and the group Shoes That Fit team up at an elementary school? Well, it not only helps kids in an economically challenged community, it also turns into a giant shoe party. Anna Marcos takes in the back-to-school shoe giveaway.
Look at that! 200 kids are trying on brand-new pairs of shoes just in time for the start of the school year, and each shoebox has their name on it.
I love them, and I always want to keep them on my legs.
Smiling faces and so much excitement are the order of the day, as kids at Ricardo Lizaraga Elementary in South L.A. get ready to try on their brand-new and free pairs of shoes. You're one of the few kids who's not wearing her shoes. Why not?
I want to save them, so they won't get dirty.
And many of you may be wearing shoes that were handed down to you from your brother or sister, or a friend, or a yard sale. And so today, the opportunity to have a brand-new pair of shoes, in some instances, it may be your first pair.
And it's not just anybody helping these kids lace up the new athletic shoes. Chief Michael Moore himself from the LAPD and LA Dodgers outfielder A.J. Pollak are waiting on them, hand and foot, you could say.
These young people are coming from a community that is impoverished, that is challenged, and a community, sometimes the only time you see an officer is when he or she's running to a call, or responding to an emergency or crisis. And the opportunity for an officer to just stand and smile, and maybe bend a knee, play a game, have some small talk with a young person is too few. Today is an opportunity to do that.
We're able to bring a lot of shoes to some really happy kids.
The shoe giveaway is a partnership between the LAPD, the LA Dodgers Foundation, and Shoes That Fit, a nonprofit group.
We have a whole measuring packet. We work with schools to make sure the kids are measured beforehand, and then we order the shoes in that size.
So it allows them to be more confident, be more active, because they have a pair of shoes that fit.
We want to make sure that students are coming to school ready to learn, and one thing that they do need is the proper clothing, the proper materials to get started. Ready, set, go!
And the best part for the kids?
My shoes are fast food.
Your shoes are fast food?
The kids seem to think their new shoes give them wings or something.
I go fast with my shoes, and my mommy's going to be happy with them.
You think they'll make you go faster?
Yes.
For the grown-ups, speed is nice, but they also hope the new shoes give the kids a little extra bounce in their step that just may also bounce up their academic performance.
There's now also a new mobile trailer to help deliver the shoes to various schools. A helipad at the Olive View Medical Hospital in Silmar is back in business after a much-needed restoration. It will now serve as an additional resource for firefighters during the upcoming fire season and into the future.
Welcome to the unveiling of one of our newest firefighting resources.
This heli-spot was inoperable due to damage that we suffered during a brush fire over a decade ago. We now have a brand-new heli-spot.
The northeast San Fernando Valley is very familiar with tragic devastation.
Right now, we're in the most extreme part of the fire season. From our perspective, it's not if it will happen, it's just when it will happen.
This is critical, because we've had historically large fires in this part of the city, such as the Mayor and the Sayer and the Creek Fire.
This is what it's about. This is good government working together for the benefit of the entire region.
We are improving public safety for the residents of the northeast San Fernando Valley and greater Los Angeles region.
I'm also pleased to share that our new helicopter parked behind us is a 2019 Augusta Westland AW-139, which we placed into service just a few weeks ago at a cost of $18 million. Our helicopters are capable of dropping 450 gallons of water per drop and are available for response 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So in closing, your Los Angeles City and County Fire Departments are prepared for the busy brush season that's ahead of us.
If you're looking for a spot to go biking free of cars, this may be it. A pedestrian and bike path that runs along the L.A. Riverbank and Studio City between Coldwater Canyon and Witset Avenue has just opened. It marks the completion of the second phase of the city's L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan.
Mary Garcetti's vision, and many others, has been to bring this river back to life, and we bring it back to life a segment at a time.
Previously, there was no access to the river. It was basically gated off and used for city purposes, but now they've been adding sections so people can bike and walk, and just even some park features.
It's also a very big step forward in connecting all of these segments into one continuous, wonderful recreational asset that extends from Canoga Park all the way to Universal City and beyond.
This is access for the community, as we strive to increase accessibility for every resident in the city to be close to a park within a half-mile walking distance. This also represents that huge endeavor that we're after here in the city of Los Angeles.
I look for places like this to ride with my six-year-old daughter. People want to be able, people want to have safe places to go and walk and bike.
I grew up in this neighborhood, and there's a number of businesses that are just behind the L.A. River, so having access to it, it's been something I've been waiting for for
The path, which used to be a maintenance access road, features new paving, fencing, trees, and bike racks. A bridge housing facility for women opens, television shows filmed in L.A. are honored, and a Caribbean festival offers up cultural and culinary delights. All this in City V. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell put the spotlight on locally-made TV shows that are nominated for Emmy Awards with the Made in Hollywood honors. The awards recognize projects that keep productions in California.
This is really something to celebrate. These are jobs in the tens of thousands that have come back to the city of Los Angeles into the region, and that deserves some celebratory applause right there.
Made in Hollywood.
The Gardner Street Women's Bridge Housing Center opened its doors recently. City leaders were there to celebrate the grand opening. The center will house 30 women at a time and will include staff, security, and on-site services. The African-American Caribbean Festival at La Mert Park Village was a fun-filled happening that included music from a variety of artists. The second annual event was free to the public. It's not very often that the community has a chance to recognize and thank their local firefighters. That's why Councilmember Bob Blumenfield got everyone together recently for some barbecue.
Five, four, three, two, one. Well, this is an honor-a-hero event, but we wanted to make this also a chance to meet different first responders. So we have police, we have fire, we have emergency preparedness folks. At 8 o'clock at night, we're going to show a movie, Incredibles 2, to make it fun for the whole family and make it a nice event. Also have free hot dogs and hamburgers, and the fire department's grilling it up. Firefighters have volunteered to do that.
Tonight, the L.A. City Fire Department Union was asked to provide the Moab, mother of all barbecues, and we cooked approximately 350 hamburgers and 300 hot dogs.
I mean, it's all about community, and this is a day about the community getting in touch with our emergency preparedness folks, our police, our fire, et cetera, and building communities.
I don't think they get tanked enough for what they do, you know? They risk their lives every day, and they do a great job, and we need to show them that we care, we appreciate what they do. There should be more of this, like every day, you know? They're always there, and they're like invisible heroes.
I don't think any firefighter ever considers himself a hero. It's just something we're doing for the citizens and the community, and stuff that we love to do, to help our community, to help our people, helping our family. The people of this city are our family.
Love tacos? Well, who doesn't, right? Then head on over to a taco festival, visit your favorite museum for free, and dust off those roller skates or rent ones for a good cause. All this in Things to Do. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez presents the Silmar Taco Festival, a free food and music festival featuring the tastiest taco and culinary creations in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Have a fun-filled day with live music, a taco-eating contest, car show, and of course tacos from Silmar. You don't want to miss out on Silmar Taco Festival, happening Saturday, September 21st, from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Silmar Park. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Museum Day is a one-day event where participating museums and cultural institutions across the country provide free entry to anyone with a Museum Day ticket. These downloadable tickets are one ticket per email address and admit two people per ticket. Come discover L.A. art and culture at Museum Day 2019, happening throughout Los Angeles on Saturday, September 21st. For more details, visit smithsonianmag.com/museumday. In recognition of World Alzheimer's Day, the Grand Park Foundation hosts All Skate for Alzheimer's. Bring the whole family to check out downtown L.A.'s first-ever outdoor roller skating rink. Skate, play, and eat as we celebrate the heroic efforts and services provided daily by Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers. Three days of fun await at the All Skate for Alzheimer's event, happening September 20th through the 22nd at Grand Park in downtown L.A. For tickets, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Check out the L.A. Fashion Festival, where progressive ideas meet immersive cultural experiences through film, retail, and beauty. This two-day festival includes fashion films, workshops, and pop-up experiences. The festival aims for meaningful exchanges via cutting-edge brand experiences, hands-on master classes, and thought-provoking panel discussions. Explore an event where textiles and sustainability converge. It's the Los Angeles Fashion Festival, happening September 20th and 21st at Film Studios. For more, visit lafashionfestival.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week.
Morning, good morning. If you'd please take a seat. Today is Friday, September 20th. We want to welcome you to City Hall in this council chambers. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Cedillo, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Grekorian, Lee Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves. Blumenfield seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Buscayino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 1 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 7, 13, and 14 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance for item 7 will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, well, if we get to that number, please alert me, and we'll deal with it.
And then, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Our general public comment.
Okay, let's, we'll do some general public comment. We'll start with Cory Schmidt. Hida Patani, please come forward.
Mr. Schmidt.
Okay. Cory Schmidt, for the record, I got to make this quick, only got a minute, so just want to say, "Kill Bill on the police permit review." I say yes, good guy. Mr. Delgado for the Central Planning Commission, I think him and his wife are upstanding citizens, and I think they've got good hearts. I'm going to power through this a bit. Let's go down to the bottom. I want to see some nightly street cleaning on Pico. Southbound Barrington at Palms, I want a left-turn signal. I want some more drivers' education in terms of merging properly. And then my meat of this, I want to talk about human trafficking and slavery. I believe all these people know what life is like under tyranny, and they understand what it's like, and I don't think that we should put up with it. And I think we need to join together to fight this manipulation that could be coming with this 5G. And I see that there's a lot of scapegoating of this guy Trump, kind of a sleight-of-hand blame shift on this whole thing, and there's just a power monopoly coming with depopulation.
Thank you.
I think we need to fight it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Hannah Patani, and I'm from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Los Angeles Times recently reported about establishing anti-displacement zones and rejecting the proposal of 577-unit housing project by the city council that would displace lifelong community residents, making housing unaffordable to live in. Not to mention there are about 15,000 homeless people living in Los Angeles. The homeless population is increasing with an alarming rate of 16% as compared to last year. Women and minors summing up to 40% of the homeless population. Another 40% of the population suffers from disorders and illnesses. The black and African-American community are the most affected. There are several factors causing homelessness, and hence there would be several solutions needed. The solutions being rent control, housing facilities that are affordable, and services required for the mentally ill and abused population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And if I could get... And if I could get, uh, Lynn Moses and Lauren Natoli. Yes.
Lorna Paisley. On this global climate strike day, I would like to bring something to mind of the city. The magazine Discover Los Angeles thinks you are green. You are not green. Vehicles using natural gas are not green. They produce CO2, and that gas is produced through fracking, which produces another greenhouse gas, methane. People have total front yards of concrete. Concrete holds in heat, and it does not allow water to drain down into the aquifer. And here's a city limited with water. And nothing is done about the waste of water by homeowners or apartment owners, because I see it getting wasted about every day with a walk. The philosophy of Mayor Garcetti, our version of Trump, is, "To damn with the people, let's pour concrete and get rid of trees. I need those developers on my side." Stoplights have poor coordination, wasting gas and producing CO2 due to, I am told, the job being given to a member of the good old boys' club. And now, we're told we are breathing plastic. One credit card amount in a week, says Sierra Magazine.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning, I'm Lauren Natoli from the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Los Angeles has a massive homeless population that we are entirely unequipped to handle. There are many different possibilities that one can take when trying to alleviate these problems, such as supportive housing and meal vouchers. But one of the largest problems facing the homeless today is that the current policies criminalize them for living. Certain policies with the intention of relieving the social impact of people living with homelessness in reality have caused great harm. From discarded possessions on the streets to full vehicles getting towed, people who have little else are being driven even deeper into the abyss of hardships they work so hard to stay afloat in. We urge the courts and city attorney's office to exercise their powers and eliminate old warrants for low-level offenses, so people have the capacity to work toward their housing, employment, and health goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and then if I could get Legrand, uh, Clegg, and Arno Sacks. Yes, sir. Identify yourself, please.
Thank you. Lynn Moses. The only thing, the only proper thing Donald Trump's ever said is the Democrats in Los Angeles are causing homelessness. Unfortunately, like programs like Marquis Dawson's Destination Crenshaw destroying the businesses on Crenshaw Boulevard, small black businesses via the metro project, replaced by multi-level homes, supported by his Destination Crenshaw project, which he's, all lined up these ve, white corporate vendors, which will not be allowed on Crenshaw Boulevard. You see these people parading in here, they're going to be in front of those stores. "We will not allow you to destroy our community." This is the only reason the attack on the AFEBA Center. Jabari's been there twenty years, not one penny has he gotten with all these services for the community, and you have done nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Moses, thank you. So, if I could get Legrand, uh, Clegg, and, uh, Rob Kwan. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Legrand Clegg, and I'm the City Attorney Emeritus for Compton, California.
Good to see you.
I've come to speak on behalf of maintaining the AFEBA Center. You're well aware of the high rate of unemployment, homelessness, poor health, inferior education, crime, gang violence, and other issues that are rampant in South Central. Our organization and several others have held meetings there for years. Our goal is to supplement the information and services provided by social agencies. Given the vital role that our organization plays in spreading information and providing needed services to our constituents, we do not understand why the AFEBA Center has been targeted for termination or reformation. Such interruption will not be tolerated in the, in any other community, and we will not allow it to happen here. We're open to negotiating a solution to this matter that is acceptable to the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Um, I picked this little sign up on a big blue bus, "People, Place, and Planet." Pretty interesting. And on the back, it's in Spanish, and nobody speaks too much about this, the Spanish population of the city. It's too bad. You know who would make a good mayor? Uh, Janice Han would make a good mayor for the city, but she's mayor in the county right now. There's a lot of power in that seat, especially in Han country. There's a lot of people here to have to represent, and there's a lot of jobs in the future that have to be represented, and yet, we don't get any kind of, nobody is talking about any plans about what's gonna happen next, except, "We're gonna be digital." Or, "We're gonna have another, another app for your phone." What about jobs for everybody?
Thank you. Okay, if we could get, uh, Eric Previn and Jabari Jemani. Yes, Mr. Kwan.
Good morning. Uh, I've got a story. Last month, I, uh, serendipitously found myself around a conversation where two people, um, who work for corporations spending millions of dollars influencing local interests, uh, were talking about the CD-12 race, and they were really excited because John Lee won, and, uh, the other person reflected, "Oh, that must be so awkward for the people that endorse the reign." And, uh, the reply was, "You can fix any endorsement with enough money." That's an exact quote. That's why I'm concerned about this council. In our May vote where we discussed the developer ban and the non-individual ban, there seemed to be clear agreement that we shouldn't have dark money. We shouldn't have random LLCs. We should have some standards, some transparency. You have options, and currently, we're not exploring them. I hope you get your stuff together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Previn and Jabari and, uh, Ruth Summers Chaplin, yes. Or Chaplin. Yes, Mr. Previn.
Good morning, sir. Take note that there's not one single item of business before the public, which is very bad form, because you're limiting criticism of you because you're running for county supervisor. Now, in your efforts to get elected to county supervisor, you took fifteen hundred dollars from Jewel Labs. Sir, will you give that back? I think that since that time, it's clear, I know your employee went to work for them, but, sir, do not stand with that group, stand with the people of Los Angeles, and protect the young people. And also, I'll just ask Mr. Harris Dawson, for God's sakes, the AFEBA Center, sir, come on, step forward. And Mr. Coretts, what kind of scapegoating nonsense is going on? Now, it's clear, the LA Fire Department has said, "We don't have anything." We had the old preliminary determination that Mayor Garcetti kicked off, that Skirball was started by a homeless encampment. False, it's not factually accurate. Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Blumenfield, you know what I'm talking about. Step forward, decry that, and step up for regular people, and let's not be unfair to the poor folks who are homeless. We want to help people, we don't want people to light fires, but they aren't lighting fires. The guy who lit the fire, the other fire, was a rich guy. Thank you.
Yes, uh, next speakers, please.
Good morning. I was looking for Brother Jabari, because you had called his name next, but I don't see him. But I am Chaplain Ruth Summers Tweedle, AKA Queenie, and my husband Chaplain Rebel Tweedle, we do feeding of people on the streets all around Los Angeles and into Santa Monica and places where the largest amount of teens who are homeless have been lured out here for the entertainment industry. Right now, because of the entertainment industry, when we lost our brother Nipsey Hustle, that corner has become so important, because of the train, it's so important. But as of this particular point, what you're looking at is at veterans like my husband, who have meetings there, uh, teens who come there for everything from, uh, classes in, uh, educational classes to physical, uh, classes, and adults, business, uh, owners, religious groups, all of us come in there, and what you're doing is, you're taking it as a grab, like in a game on the internet, because what you're doing is, you're grabbing that property, because now, all of a sudden, it's an important piece, because it could bring money to whomever is in that area.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's your time. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes, uh, public comment. Ms. Rodriguez for presentation. In fact, while she's walking up, let's, uh, vote on reconsideration, Madam Clerk, on those ordinances. You want to read them?
That would be for item seven.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, we'll actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. I am honored today to have the opportunity to join with one of my favorite groups, we all know, um, to celebrate Firefighter Appreciation Month in the city of Los Angeles. Can we please give our firefighters a big round of applause? I am honored to be joined today by our great members of the LA City Fire Department and the Cal Fire Foundation to celebrate September as Firefighter Appreciation Month. As the proud daughter of an LA, a retired LA City firefighter, I will tell you that there is no greater joy for me than to be able to, uh, honor the work of these incredible men and women who are so dedicated in public service and give so much to our city and our state and our country each and every day. Many of these firefighters don't, are not restricted or bound by the geographic boundaries here in Los Angeles. Many of them are in service, uh, as part of joint commands to be of service to other areas of need, particularly when we have devastating wildfires across this state, uh, but even beyond, uh, our local boundaries and our state boundaries have extended themselves in, uh, many other disasters that they've had to respond to as part of the joint effort that we are engaged in. We, again, don't know any boundaries when it comes to being of service here in the city of Los Angeles. Their direct involvement in fire prevention and disaster response, emergency medical care, they make our community safer, but they also do that well beyond the city of Los Angeles. And so, today, we are celebrating the firefighters who have been part of the urban search and rescue team that was deployed to Hurricane Dorian in North Carolina. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, to ask Assistant Chief Tim Erst to, uh, join me in this recognition this morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilwoman Rodriguez, honorable council members and guests. My name is Assistant Chief Tim Erst, and I have the pleasure of representing the forty-one members, outstanding members of the LAFD's California Task Force One, our urban search and rescue team that were deployed to the east coast in response to Hurricane Dorian. As you probably know, the Los Angeles Fire Department is home to one of twenty-eight FEMA teams across the United States, prepared to deploy immediately and initiate urban search and rescue operations in a variety of disaster scenarios. The USAR team operates with members organized into five specialties, including management, search, rescue, medical, and hazardous materials. While each team is comprised of seventy members, in the case of our deployment to Dorian, a specialty group of forty-one members with an emphasis on water rescue expertise and two rescue dogs were sent. Similar to our previous deployments to Hurricane Katrina in two thousand and five and numerous hurricanes since then, our team traveled with rescue boats, specialized equipment for flooded areas, search, moving water rescue, and long-term unsupported operational periods. The greatest strength of this team is the level of commitment of our members, all who volunteer to be a part of the team, which involves significant training above their normal daily fire department position duties. And a particular note, we have two civilian members that are here with us today that put their own private livelihoods on hold, so they too can respond to the call for help. Our team physician, Dr. Fran Vogler, and our structural engineer, Sam Lobnan. And last but surely not least, we can't forget one of our search dogs, Tesla, who's here to, here today with us, with her handler, apparatus operator, Ty Trin. Let me take you back three weeks when the news was filled with updates on the quickly increasing strength of Hurricane Dorian, which became a category-five hurricane, demolishing the Bahamas and moving toward our eastern coast. California Task Force One received activation orders on Tuesday, September the third. Once in Charlotte, the team was staged with six other teams for four days, all poised to move into the area anticipated to have been affected by the hurricane. And although the storm didn't impact our country with the same deadly effects that it had shown only days before, the time spent in staging did afford the daily training of our team members in a number of specialties, which you may see in some of the slides that are being played. In closing, on behalf of Fire Chief Tarazas and the members of California Task Force One here that are with me today, we humbly thank you for your recognition and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Chief. We are also joined today, uh, by my very good friend, Captain Chung Ho, who will say a few words on behalf of the California Fire Foundation. Thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Chung Ho. I'm a fire captain with the LAFD. I'm also the vice president of the Firefighters Union, UFLAC Local 112, proudly representing the men and women of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. I want to first say thank you to Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and the full council for taking the time out today to, so that we can have this opportunity to show our appreciation for firefighters during Firefighter Appreciation Month. I also want to recognize the California Fire Foundation for all that they do in supporting and honoring our California firefighters, and most notably, their work as it relates to the fallen firefighter memorial. Next week, in a ceremony to be held in Sacramento, one of our very own, Captain Cecil Morris will have his name engraved on the memorial wall to indicate that he has made the ultimate sacrifice. I'm honored to be here and to have this opportunity to publicly show my appreciation for Captain Morris and for all the firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and colleagues, uh, you know, we all very well know the sacrifices that the men and women of our fire department, uh, make every single day to be of service to our city and beyond, and when you take with the work of this incredible task force as well, leaving their families, uh, for extended periods of time to be of service, uh, to emergencies across our country or well beyond, uh, it's with great gratitude that we honor them today, thank them all for their work and their service to our great city, um, but of course, to every, to, uh, individuals everywhere where there's a need, they, they heed the call, and so, we're grateful for their service. And with that, uh, Mr. President, we want to acknowledge our great firefighters and, uh, honor them with Firefighter Appreciation Month.
Ms. Rodriguez, I'd like to recognize Mr. Coretts. If you guys don't leave just yet. Mr. Coretts, followed by Mr. Buscayino.
Well, I, I certainly wanted to, uh, first thank, uh, our colleague, Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing this forward, but, um, I personally could be, could not be more appreciative of our fire department, uh, particularly, uh, the amazing work you did during the Skirball fire that happened in my district. Honestly, we should have literally lost billions of dollars of property and perhaps lives, and, uh, we emerged with, with none of our residents hurt and just the initial few homes that, that were hit at the very beginning of the fire. It was an amazing job, an amazing, uh, uh, combination of strategy and planning and implementation, and folks being willing to risk their lives as our firefighters are willing to do every day. So, uh, I wanted to thank you all for that. Uh, I'm certainly proud of our search and rescue team and others that are willing to go all over the country and beyond in, in emergencies and lend aid and expertise, uh, and I hope we do enough to support our fire department. I know we've, uh, recently, in this last budget go-around, approved and, and purchased an eighteen-million-dollar helicopter and a new drone program, and honestly, everything this department needs, uh, it should be given, because you protect us, um, and we should be backing you up a hundred percent. But I just wanted to express my pride and my thanks to the department for all the amazing things you do for all of us.
Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you so much for recognizing the world's finest fire department. And I, I want all members of the fire department, both sworn and civilian, to know that you have a committee chairwoman here who continues to fight and advocate for public safety resources, and just blessed to serve alongside you, Monica, to fight and advocate for public safety resources as it relates to, to the fire department. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure to serve alongside each and every one of you in this fire department for fifteen years, and, um, it, we know, we, we share that same DNA, whether it's police, fire, public safety in general, we're going towards the emergency. Um, and seeing and working alongside you and the fire department, uh, and, and dealing with, you know, the know, the most tragic incidents that we see in the city and addressing and responding to calls of people who are in desperate need, experiencing violence, traffic collisions, fires. We have to be reminded of the work that our men and women do in the fire department each and every day, and the fact that they may not come home after they kiss their loved ones goodbye, starting a shift. So I stand here with my colleagues, with our chairwoman, to recognize you, appreciate you, we love you, we bless you. And at the same time, it shouldn't take one day or a month to recognize the work that you do. It's every day in the city of angels that you are our angels protecting us, serving us, and ensuring that 1-911, that call arrives at the fire stations that you respond. So God bless you. Thank you for your service to our city.
Mr-- okay, now, whoa, 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 wait, no. Ms. Ramirez, we're not doing that. You're disrupting this meeting, and it's your last warning. Mr. Lee?
I just want to say that I'm extremely proud to serve on the Public Safety Committee along with our chair, Councilmember Rodriguez, and hopefully I can be just as big a support that you have done for this amazing fire department that we have here in the city of Los Angeles. No one should be more appreciative than I for-- Council District Twelve is surrounded on two sides by ridge areas and the mountain areas. And over and over, I don't-- I can't even remember the last time we've actually had a structure loss in CD twelve. And what we don't realize is not only the sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice that you're willing to do each and every day to protect our community, but it's the sacrifice that you do with your time when you become a firefighter and your call to be in the station, the different family functions that you miss, the weddings, the birthday parties, the-- all the different things that we as, you know, the people who aren't take for granted that, you know, those sacrifices that you make on daily-- in your daily lives, that we so much appreciate and that everyone should appreciate everything that you do. So I just want to join Councilmember Rodriguez in thanking you for everything that you do for the city.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, for bringing this forward. I just wanted to rise to say thank you to all the firefighters. And as echoed by my colleagues, a month is not enough. Actually, it should be firefighter season, the entire summer months should be firefighter appreciation season, if not the entire year, because also representing a huge portion of the hillsides, the work that you do, not just in Los Angeles City, but the county and all throughout the world, is world-class. But more importantly, it's not just about fires. You don't just fight fires. In your-- all throughout the year, you get paramedic calls, you get calls for, you know, somebody's kittens, not just a kitten stuck in a tree, but homeless calls. You guys are often the first responders to many of these calls that happens every single day, and we want to thank you for all of your service. That's why we love our firefighters. I think there is no other profession that is more respected and revered and loved by all Angelinos. So thank you so very much, and happy Fire Appreciation Month.
Mr. Weeza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to express the sentiments of my colleagues to thank you. We can't thank you enough for your service. And in Council District Fourteen, every time there is a fire, I cannot step back but marvel at the work you do to save lives and save property. And recently, in Egorock, we had a fire that extended over into Glendale, and through your hard work and cooperation with the Glendale Fire Department, the County Fire Department, that was put out quickly. And on the city side, there were no evacuations, thanks to your hard work. So thank you so much. And in downtown, you know, we have warehouse fires here and there, but they're quickly put out, and as dangerous that can be, and going into those buildings, we often hear about the heroic work you do to prevent from those fires from spreading to the rest of downtown. So thank you so much for your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed. And as my Councilmember Buscagno said, we do have the best fire department in the country. Thank you so much.
I'd just give them another round of applause.
presentation? Colleagues, I'm proud to stand here with my colleague, Councilmember Blumenfield, this morning to welcome His Holiness, Mar Guevarguis III, the patriarch of the Assyrian Church of the East and members of the Assyrian Church. Once again, we welcome His Holiness on his first trip to Los Angeles. His arrival here in L.A. marks the completion of a three-month tour of the United States that began in Washington, D.C., where he was invited to provide consultation and insight on the Assyrian people. Also hosting His Holiness and joining us today in council chambers is the leadership of St. Mary's Assyrian Church from Tarzana that includes His Grace, Mar Primo Hamas, the Bishop of the Western Diocese of the United States, and the Very Reverend Father George, core bishop and rector of St. Mary's Parish. The Assyrian Church of the East, based in northern Iraq, has approximately one hundred and seventy thousand members, mostly in Iraq, Iran, Syria, and the United States. And while they have been separated from the Chaldean Catholics of the region for centuries, both have suffered greatly from the genocide committed by the Islamic State. His Holiness was the Archbishop of Iraq for thirty-five years, and almost all those years were those of war and suffering that the people of the country endured. In 2010, his cathedral in Baghdad was blown up by terrorists, killing more than fifty men, women, and children, and most were forced to flee the area and leave their country of their birth. When the former patriarch passed away five years ago, His Holiness was appointed as the Hundred and Twenty-First Catholicos Patriarch. Since then, part of his mission is to raise awareness among the international community about the continued plight and suffering of the Assyrian Christians and to advocate for peace in the interfaith communities. Today, there are approximately fifty thousand Assyrian Americans living in California and more than ten thousand in Southern California. And even with hundreds of thousands of followers throughout the world, Los Angeles has one of the largest and most vibrant Assyrian populations outside of the Middle East. In fact, we have a significant population in the Encino area and in Tarzana. But this first visit to the U.S. and today's visit to Los Angeles City Hall offers an extraordinarily significant and sacred opportunity to these parishioners. For all of you today, it's an honor and a blessing to finally meet His Holiness in person, since he has spent the last decade in Iraq caring for the persecuted community which has endured undue hardship at the hands of terrorists. Moreover, this is an opportunity to connect to the Assyrian nation, made up of more than a million brothers and sisters displaced and scattered around the globe, and to celebrate its unity in culture and faith with a message strengthened with hope for a brighter future. So it is my honor to offer my most sincere welcome to Your Holiness and members of St. Mary's. And with that, I will now hand it over to Councilmember Blumenfield.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Coretz. Thank you for organizing this and including me in this. This is a really momentous occasion, as we introduce His Holiness, Mar Guevarguis III, Catholicos Patriarch of the Holy Apostolic Catholic Assyrian Church of the East. And today with us, we have over two hundred members of the Assyrian community here with us today, and you can see them behind me, yes. Many of them came in from a bus, and I was happy to provide that from Tarzana, which is part of the area that I represent. And we're here to formally welcome His Holiness to the city of Los Angeles, where we have one of the most ethnically diverse populations in the United States, and it's also home to the largest-- to one of the largest Assyrian communities outside of the Middle East. For those of you who may not know about the Assyrian Church of the East and its leadership, His Holiness, Mar Guevarguis III, was appointed as the Hundred and Twenty-First Catholicos Patriarch in September of 2015. And since then, he has taken his mantle onto the world stage. He's been urging for peace in the interfaith community, and we are so honored to be joined by the many bishops and leaders of the Assyrian Church, including Core Bishop Bait Rasheh, or we call him Father George, of St. Mary's in Tarzana. The Core Bishop has spent his life tending to the Assyrian community, and he's been leading his parish at St. Mary's since 1996. And it is a wonderful community. I have the opportunity and privilege to partner with this community on numerous events, and they are all engaged members of our community. We often stand here to reaffirm the necessity for interreligious dialogue built on the foundation of kindness, compassion, and inclusivity. Inclusive community and dialogue are also the best cures for hate and isolation, which is something we see too much of these days. Just last year, His Holiness met with Pope Francis to sign a common statement appealing for an end of the persecution of Christians in the Middle East. The Assyrian Church of the East had its beginnings in the Middle East, and its followers have endured countless generations of turmoil, persecution, and violence. His Holiness, who we will hear from in a moment, is a shining example of working alongside other religious leaders to find common ground and to seek dialogue. And that makes him stand out as a living pillar of virtue for others to live by and to learn by. Now, St. Mary's Parish has made so many contributions to our community, especially through its youth program. They meet regularly, they provide educational activities that encourage faithfulness and compassion. Many of our youth participate in giving food to the homeless, passing out blankets in the winter, assisting refugees integrate into the U.S. Many more acts of kindness, many more examples of this community not only helping itself and its community, but helping the larger community around it. One of the greatest challenges the Assyrian community in Tarzana faced when their church burned down was when their church burned down. And in the aftermath of that incident, the community came together to donate funds and support the reconstruction of their beloved church. Not only was the church building renewed, but so was their faith in each other. The San Fernando Valley and the entire city of Los Angeles would be an entirely different place without the Assyrians' community and their inspiring resolve. Today, we'd like to formally welcome the Assyrian Church of the East to the city of Los Angeles and recognize them for their vibrant culture and contributions to our city. Also, after this, be sure to join us up in the Bradley Tower after this presentation for a special cultural exhibit, and the exhibit will have statues, large posters that display the telling of the story of the Assyrian nation from its beginning, which was about three thousand years before Christ, also the history of the church, which is almost two thousand years old. There will be pamphlets explaining the history of the church, the Assyrian nation, and the genocide that it's endured. So without further ado, I would like to bring forward His Holiness, Mar Guevarguis III.
Honorable council members of the beautiful and blessed city of Los Angeles, the esteemed council member, Paul Coretz V., the esteemed council member, Bo Blumenfeld III., blessed assembly of the children of God, prayers and blessings receive. I pray for your grace and peace from God, our Father, Creator of heaven and earth, supplicating him to grant you the ability to always glorify him in all that you do. It brings me a great joy today as I witness this honorable body of leaders of this historical chamber with a passionate heart, its arms open, welcoming the children of our Assyrian church and nation, encouraging them to celebrate their apostolic faith and their Assyrian identity which dates back thousands of years before Christ. Let me take a few moments to tell you about this Assyrian nation. The roots of Assyria began about four thousand years before Christ in the great land of Ashur, also known as Betnahren, Mesopotamia, the land between two rivers, the Iraq of today. The Assyrians built a great empire, ruling most of the Middle East, reaching as far as Egypt, at the same time, building great cities and making great contributions to the world at large. Let us enumerate a few items of monumental legacy they bequeathed to mankind of all time: systems of irrigation, systems of canalization, recognition of divine guidance, art, constructional, painting, decorating, sculpture, fashioning of ornaments in gold, silver, brass, copper, precious and semi-precious stones, necessary house implements, necessary home implements, management of community centers, commerce, code of law, crown of achievement, art of writing, progressive development from pico graff to sign language, from sign language to alphabet. The real revolutionary invention that has promoted mechanical technology to such a degree that without it, the letter could not be thought of, for it would be totally paralyzed. for it would be totally paralyzed. The lens enabling them to study the stars, the writing and composing of music, establishing the world's first library, and so much more and more. For these reasons, Dr. Wigram called Assyria "the crackle of mankind." Dr. S. N. Kramer called her "the cradle of civilization." And if you desire proof, all you have to do is take a stroll through the British Museum in London or the Levery Museum of Paris. In the second half of the first century, the disciples of Christ, Thomas, Thaddeus, and Mary, brought the good news of salvation to the Assyrians of Mesopotamia. This time, the Assyrians would dedicate their lives to build a Christian empire, thus carrying the holy cross of our Lord and the gospel for centuries to places wide and far, converting people to this divine faith, starting from the Middle East and going all the way to India, China, Mongolia, and Japan. By the eighth century, the Assyrian Church had converted over 80 million people to the Christian faith. Then Sir Chlopedia Britannica says, "Their campaign was one of the deliberate conquests and one of the greatest ever planned by Christian missionaries. Their activity may well be said to have covered the continent of Asia." Mr. John Stolt, a great church historian, said, "The amazing thing is not where they went, but rather where did they not go?" In the Middle Age, the Assyrian Church of the East became the most widespread church in the world. Last, deliberate campaigns of persecutions, one after another, lasting for centuries up to the present day, caused this great church to be named "the Church of Martyrs," demolished and becoming nearly extinct. Trying to extinguish this great flame has been the mission of its enemies, destroying our churches, murdering our clergy, kidnapping our children, raping our women, and recently, as you might have seen on television, to the point of using jackhammers to vanquish our history, causing our people to flee and leave their homes. But as you can see, they have not been able to accomplish their mission. Every church they destroyed, we have built another. For every clergy they have murdered, we have ordained another. For every faithful they have martyred, God has blessed us with another. We have our hope, we shall live, we shall thrive, we shall worship our Jesus. One day, we shall obtain our Lord of Ashur again. Thank you, God bless you, God strengthen you, and God keep and protect you. I shall close with these blessing words of the great martyr, Mar Shimon Barzabai, the patriarch of our church martyred in the fourth century. May the cross of our Lord be the protection of the people of Jesus. May the peace of God be with the servants of God and stabilize your hearts and the faith of Christ in tribulation and in ease, in life and in death. Now and forever, amen.
We have one member on the queue, Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Your Holiness, thank you for blessing us in Los Angeles with your presence here today. It's a great honor for us in the Los Angeles City Council to welcome you. And it's a special privilege and honor for me as the only Armenian-American ever to be elected to the City Council in the city of Los Angeles' history. It has special meaning for me to welcome you. Our two peoples have enriched and enlightened this world since before the first pyramid was built in Egypt. The Armenian people and the Assyrian people together have spread innovation and enlightenment throughout the world. And we share the similar experience of tracing our Christian roots to the very beginnings, to the apostles of Christ. In fact, members, if you don't know, the language that is spoken in the Assyrian church is the very language that was spoken by Jesus Himself. And Your Holiness, we are so deeply honored because you are the spiritual descendant that has created that continuity of spirituality of our Christian faith from the very beginning, traceable to the apostles, to all of the people who are here today and the people who worship under your spiritual leadership. Throughout our Christian history, the Armenian people and the Assyrian people have been united as well. In our ancient history, sometimes we didn't get along so well. Sometimes we fought. But throughout our Christian history, Etschmeadzin and Antioch have relied upon one another, have supported one another, and have helped to spread the faith well beyond our part of the world throughout the diaspora throughout the world. And yet, we've also found commonality in our societies that we've lived in. Where my family came from, in the Ottoman Empire in western Armenia, was a place called Kharpert, where many Assyrians also lived. And in many respects, there was even intermarriage among the Armenians and the Assyrians. So I don't know for sure, but there's at least a possibility I may be the first Assyrian councilmember here as well. I don't know what happened. I can't say what happened in history, I'm not sure. But we have long stood together as brothers and sisters. And we stood together as brothers and sisters in some of the most difficult times in history as well. During the Sefo, during the genocide committed by the Turks against our people and others in our part of the world. Our villages were destroyed, our families were murdered, our churches were desecrated again and again. And the oppressor, the committer of genocide, didn't distinguish between Assyrians and Turks and Greeks and others. To them, we were just Christians who needed to be destroyed. And so we died together very often as well. And since then, the Assyrian people and the Armenian people have faced challenges together. For much of our modern history, we've both been stateless people. And we've had the challenge of maintaining our cultural identity in a diaspora that is widespread. And I would submit, Your Holiness, that what has kept the Assyrian people together as a culture, a rich, ancient, beautiful culture, what has kept them together in this diaspora, just as what has kept the Armenian people together in this diaspora as a culture, as a nation, is the church and is your leadership and the leadership of all those that came before you as well. So as we continue to face the challenges of terrorism and of desecration of churches and of all the horrors that are happening, we know that we can take strength from that common heritage that we share, from our faith that has enriched us and held us strong throughout millennia. And we will continue to thrive together in the future. And I want to thank you for your leadership. Under your spiritual leadership, I know that the Assyrian people here in Los Angeles and throughout the world will continue to thrive and continue to enlighten the world. Thank you. So as a small appreciation from the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to give you this certificate of welcome hereby presented to His Holiness on the occasion of your visit here.
Thank you, Your Holiness. We are all blessed by your presence here in Los Angeles City Council. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, our last presentation is from CD1, Mr. Sadio. You ready? All right, just give it a few minutes to clear out. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a few items to go forthwith.
Yes, there are requests from members to send items 11, 13, and 14 forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. I know Mr. Sadio has a very special presentation. So Mr. Sadio, we'll turn it over to you for our final presentation of the day. Okay, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to present Naomi Rodriguez. I am joined this morning by SALF, the Salvadorian American Leadership and Education Fund. Many of you may remember last fall, the Dodgers were battling it out for a place in the playoffs. And there was this game on a Friday night. And it was the longest game. It went through the evening and it went into the morning. And it was, the whole city was up after hours riveted, paying attention. It was also the evening of the annual dinner for SALF, and they were honoring Carlos Vaca Rano. And he was there to receive acknowledgement for his decades of service to the community. Naomi Rodriguez was also scheduled to be honored that night. But of course, the game went beyond the reception, beyond the dinner, beyond the banquet, and beyond the evening into the morning. And so she was unable to make it back to the hotel to receive her acknowledgement. We thought we'd schedule it this morning so that she could be acknowledged immediately after one of our longer presentations here on the floor of the council. And so, many of you know Naomi, she's a familiar face here. She's been a vice president for external affairs for the Dodgers since 2014. And today, she leads their efforts for civic empowerment, community outreach, and philanthropy. Right now, the Dodgers are preparing for next year's 2020 All-Star Game. And to do that, we're going to do a $100 million renovation of the stadium, including a voluntary Americans with Disabilities Act retrofit. This is an extraordinary project. This means that it opens up the stadium to all Angelinos regardless of their circumstance. And it is something that we are all very proud of. It's an extraordinary commitment, given that it comes from the Dodgers. It's not paid for by the city, and it's done voluntarily. And so she's leading that effort throughout the region. Naomi was born and raised in Southern California, educated in local schools, except for a stint that she spent in England. And then she returned to graduate from Long Beach with a BA in communications. She's had a lifelong commitment to maximizing her impact in the community. Her previous work was with Los Angeles Universal Preschool. And then she was also served as the Assistant Deputy Mayor for Mayor James Hahn and was the Director of Community Affairs for the Counselate, Counsel General, actually, of Israel. She continues to give back to the community, not just in her job professionally, but also as a teacher at the Santa Monica College, working with workforce and economic development. I have a long personal history with Naomi. I went to school with her uncle. She grew up in East Los Angeles, actually on the same street that I did, a few miles east, just on the other side of the county line. But I have known her and her family for decades. She is committed to the city, to the region, to the Dodgers, and to all things that are good for people of goodwill. I'd like to introduce Carlos Vaca Rano, who could say a few words that were, he was unable to say at the event. But it's on time and for us to hear the great works and why she was being honored by SALF, the commitment of her and the Dodgers to the community.
Thank you, councilmember. Good morning, everybody. Morning, councilmembers. First, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Sadio for his leadership and support. And be thanked to SALF team who are here, our executive director, Joseline Duarte. They are doing an amazing job. So as Councilmember Sadio said, last year, we were prepared, actually for two years, to honor Naomi Rodriguez, a great friend of SALF, a gay leader of Los Angeles. I have known Naomi for many years, since she was working for Mayor Hahn. And it was because of Naomi and Natalie Reyes that the two cities, Los Angeles and San Salvador, became sister cities. So we owe that to Naomi, we owe that to Natalie and to Mayor Hahn and the council, the city council in those days. So it's for that reason that we wanted to honor Naomi, the Corporate Savers Award last year. And we are here today, happy to provide that award. And here is what we are giving to Naomi. He deserves, this is a Salvadoran act for Naomi Rodriguez. So thank you, Naomi, for all you do for Los Angeles, for your leadership, for being a great mom and a great woman and a great leader. Thank you so much. one another, and I thank you for that. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Also, just want to echo Monica's comments. Naomi, you have been just a champion for our communities in ensuring that the Dodgers organization is supportive of all neighborhoods across the city lines and even outside our city limits as well. You've just been a breath of fresh air. You lead with grace, and you are a great reflection of this incredible Dodger organization that's been so good to the city. So congratulations, Mr. Sadio. It's well deserved. I told Naomi earlier, why has this taken so long to get you in front of this council to honor you? But I know you're also humbled. You're humbled, and you are blessed by your husband and your children, who have allowed you to lead and have taken away from these late Dodger games and community events. So congratulations, God bless you. We love you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Okay, colleagues, thank you so much for our favorite part of the...
Again, let's give another round of applause to Naomi Rodriguez. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to our city and to the Dodgers organization. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, members, any announcements? Okay, seeing none. If we all rise for adjourning motions, please. Adjourning motions. Looking to my left. To my right. Seeing none. Members, I do have an adjourning motion. If we can all rise in the chamber? Oh, a few more minutes here. Do we have any pending motions circulating? Just one? Okay. So, Mr. Lee for an adjourning motion? Oh, standby. Hold on, John. Mr. Bloomingfield for an announcement.
Up in the Bradley Tower, we are, His Holiness will be there, and we're having a nice reception. All are invited.
Thank you. Okay, now for adjourning motions. Mr. Lee.
Councilmembers, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Ed Hopkins. Born in 1951 in Nashville, Arkansas, Ed grew up to have a successful radio and voice acting career, which began when he was in junior high school. Radio brought Ed from Arkansas to Dallas to Little Rock to Tulsa to Chicago, and finally back to Chicago. And then, when the radio station WFYR, the station that he worked at, was sold, Ed faced a crossroads in his life, whether to stay in Chicago with the new owners and a long-term contract, or make the jump from radio into full-time voiceover and move to Los Angeles. This was not a hard choice for Ed. He picked up, moved to Los Angeles. He successfully pursued a voiceover from his chatroom studio ever since. His long list of clients include more than seventy radio and television stations, and he has recorded countless commercials, long-form narration, and animation. And one of Ed's most cherished roles was playing Grell the Soldier Sebastian in the animated series Heavy Gear. In his free time, Ed was a private pilot, photographer, and stood up for the humane treatment of livestock. Ed leaves behind his son Jason, daughter Olivia, granddaughter Paige, grandson Reed, and his wife Cindy. He was beloved family man and friend to many, and a close friend to me, my wife, and my daughter Jada. May Ed Hopkins rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Connie Rivera. She was the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority's Director of Government and Community Relations, passed away last weekend. Connie began working as a Director of Government and Community Relations for ACTA in 2007. For the past twelve years, she worked tirelessly with community and industry groups, charitable institutions, local agencies, the Office of Local, State, and Federal Elected Offices, ACTA's board members, and her counterparts at the ports and railroads. Her previous experience included more than fifteen years in working in public affairs and public relations. She was dedicated to her role, worked tirelessly in her industry to ensure that we have modern ports and good movement transportation systems. She was crucial in the operations of the Alameda Transport Corridor, which processed millions of and tons of goods for the entire city of LA. She received her journalism degree from Cal State Long Beach, was a member of the Policy and Steering Committee for Cal State Long Beach College in Continuing Professional Education, the Advisory Board for the Carson High Global Business, Government, and Law Academy, and the Harbor Association Industry and Commerce Board. She was also a board member for the YMCA Greater LA, Long Beach, rather, and the Rotary Club of Long Beach. She was unfortunately diagnosed with cancer last week, and throughout her illness, she continued to demonstrate her care, commitment, and her love of work, her coworkers, and the entire ACTA organization. Her services celebrating mass of her life will be held today at St. Cornelius Church at 1:00 PM. Our hearts go out to Connie's friends, family, and colleagues. Connie Rivera, may she rest in peace. With that, colleagues, we are now adjourned. Go forth and serve the people of this great city. Thank you.